Okay, it's nine o'clock. We'll start the meeting. I think the first order is we have three commissioners and one alternate. So really, you'll be a member here.
Thank you.
So I think the first is, do we have a motion to approve? The meeting minutes from the last meeting?
On the motion to approve the meeting minutes from last second.
Any, any comment, any discussion? Here's John. So we've started, John. And this is, this is on, right? Let's. Let's see. Are we on?
He finds out he'll see. That pile will go through.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yes.
Yeah. So any, any comments on the November tenth? Meeting minutes? Can we make a?
I'll move it. They be adopted.
Okay, the second?
We're forty. I already seconded.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
A public comment? Do we have anybody who'd like to make a public comment? Please come.
I'm very impassioned with my God.
Please have a seat.
Thanks. Um, I tried to get put on the agenda last week. And are you Martha?
I'm Caroline.
Martha's here.
Hi, Mary Ann. Okay, she said just come to public comment, put your application. So that's what I'm doing. Um, and these are for the memorial markers. I was here last month and I gave you guys an overview. Um, so what we were hoping to do now instead, um, we went to all the different sites, um, and we were looking at Celine and then we were looking at town hall. And we love Celine. It's very open, but the history never matched. Someone here mentioned history sort of has to match what you're putting up in line. So it didn't match anywhere else. And then we were looking at town hall. We're like, the history matches. Like, this is the reason this place was built is for exactly to honor the men and women in the service. So we're kind of pitching for this site. Um, and we are gonna pitch Celine. Um, I have a I'm on the agenda for the town, uh, the board of select meeting next Monday. Um, and they're super excited to hear about it. Um, but we're on a bit of a time constraint because these markers, uh, they have to be ordered by the end of this month. And I know that you guys don't operate that quickly typically because you like to take your time in getting all information out. But we're just asking that if you look at this application, there's pictures in here. Um, we're scaling it down a little bit to fit the front of Memorial Town Hall, so it's not so flashy and not so out there. Um, to just like consider it, um, I'm happy to work with you guys over the course of the next couple of months on lettering, on, on all the things. Um, it's a very self-explanatory. These markers, um, there's not a lot to them, but if we don't, so we want this to be part of the two hundred and fiftieth celebration, uh, in July. So we have to get them ordered like as soon as possible.
In, in terms of process, uh, cause I think this is important.
Yes.
Uh, I think we have to receive the C of A and it has to be.
Um, it, it has to be publicly advertised.
Publicly advertised. So my concern is if you're trying to get this ordered by, um, we, we, in other words, we can't vote on the C of A at this meeting.
Okay, yeah, I wouldn't expect that. Absolutely not. Yeah, yeah.
You could come with this, you could submit the C of A now if you'd like.
Yeah, I have it here.
Actually, you can't because the property owner has to submit the C of A.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, and that's actually what my next question was to you because I look at this application and I'm reading it and I'm like, I'm kind of, um, kind of don't really know what to put down. So who would technically be the owner of town hall? The town of Old Lime? Okay, so I would need to get Martha's signature on this then.
So you probably couldn't do that until after next Monday when you explain it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I might actually just go down there right now and ask her. Um, but if I did that, could I just like submit this into your mailbox like in the in the back offices or do I have to come back formally and, and give this application to you?
In the mailbox or email it.
Okay.
But then we would, we would discuss it if you'd like to present at the next meeting. Um, and then we would be in a position to vote on it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, um. At the next meeting. So that would be like January third or something.
Yeah, the next January third.
Okay. Did you guys ever vote on anything earlier than that? Like, do you do special meetings for like urgency matters or time of the essence? Or if the Board of Selectment was to say, hey, like this, we want to get this moving. Is that something that like you guys would consider or is that usually not normal practice?
I, I think we, we can do a special meeting, but it would have to be, again, it would have to be publicly announced. And what's the lead time, Martha, on?
Um, for a public hearing, we have to advertise it between five and fourteen days before.
Okay. Okay, yeah, and I'm not trying to like I, I'm just trying to like move it along, you know, uh, just because of the urgency of it. We're trying to do a great thing here for, uh, for the town and the cost goes up significantly also on these markers, like thousands of dollars more. So that's kind of why we're trying to like move this quickly. Um, okay, so I just wanted to point out to you guys too that, um, very quickly, a public commentary. Um, I tried to basically create the picture of these markers in front of the tree right out here. Um, so you can see it up there, but you just have to sort of envision them back a little bit more. Um, the other thing I was in this application, you'll read is that like I, I really encourage you to go to the one in Old Saybrook and just look at it and touch it and feel it and just like look at how amazing it is before you decide on what you think.
Are you proposing two of them?
Yes, proposing two of them, the blue star and the gold star for both, um, people who have passed and then are living veterans. So, um, this is if you want to take a look.
And where is one in Old Saybrook?
So the one in Old Saybrook, it's in here. It's on Main Street. Going down Main Street, get to the Kate, it's across the street from the Kate in front of the Pickle Ball Courts, um, and like the parking area right there. It's, it's right there. It's, it's, when I first saw it, I was like, wow, this is actually really neat. So, um, so all right, I'm gonna go down the hall.
Yeah, I think that's the process. The town will submit to, submit the C of A
Okay.
to the historic commission and then, uh, they should, if, if there's a request for expediting or a special meeting, they should submit that. Will we grant that? We'll have to discuss, I guess.
Okay.
But, um, if, if not, then it would be January third.
Okay.
Be the next meeting to review.
You said you, at the beginning, you also were pushing the ten, north, uh, North Town Green?
Yeah.
So we don't have say over the North Town Green.
Right.
You could, you could, uh, that, that would be up to the town.
Oh, yeah.
Alone, alone.
Yeah, I was just letting you guys know that because in the last meeting, we had talked about the different sites and, um, and so we left here and we went and we looked and we liked Celine. It was great. It was open, but the history, like you look at the history of that area and I'm like, it just doesn't fit. And then also the witness stones are there down too, just like a hodgepodge of stuff. And we just drove by town hall and I'm like, it just really matches here. So, so yeah. We're pushing for. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Suggestions?
Yes.
Um, since the, if you want, you, you definitely want to place two signs.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, if the Celine um, site does not match the history, that's probably not an appropriate site even. I mean, I know, this is a suggestion. I know we don't have jurisdiction, but I'd like to suggest that, um, that the Celine site is very, um, effective. Now that it's open and it has the garden sign, it has, it is, you know, I think another sign there would be, um, not ideal. If you can find a place where the history matches, I mean, maybe one is enough. Because there, you know, there's not that much distance between Celine and the town hall. So one may be enough, but if you really need a second sign in the town of Old Lime, perhaps the Celine green is not the best, the best choice, just because of the, the history and the site itself.
Yeah, um, I agree too. And, and I, I love the idea of town hall, but I, I just, it was actually Martha Schumacher's idea. She's like, what about town hall? But I know whoever was here last time had said, well, there's a lot going on in town, town hall. I agree. So I was like, well, what if we just made it very simplistic? Instead of having all the flowers and things around it, it's just each post, each marker. And, and they're set back, so they're not like in your face. Uh, so yeah, it's just sort of like, okay, I will not take up any more time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, bye.
Uh, and you, you, I see you have a check.
I do.
But you're, are you a nonprofit organization?
Oh, the Duck River Garden Club is.
And the town, the town is, so you would not need a check.
Oh, okay, well that.
The town doesn't pay itself.
Well, I'm happy to pay this if we can move it along. All right, thank you very much. Bye.
Co-chairs report, uh, John, would you like to?
Well, I, I have a couple matters. Uh, we sent off the letter to Amtrak the uh, letter concerning their proposed safety enhancements and they were asking for comments about historic properties in the, in or near the right of way. And we responded by, uh, pointing them to some sources that listed historic properties. That was number one. Number two, uh, we urged them to solicit information also from the planning commission. Our main focus obviously is just on the historic district. But the planning commission would, would, needs to be aware of proposed changes. These changes might involve nine-foot steel fences going along the, the trackway and it would be a change, shall we say, particularly if, if they impeded on historic properties. And finally, we just noted the change in, in co, co-chairs. The, the second item is, as you probably have heard, but just for the record to note that the, the town, according to news accounts and uh, Martha Shoemaker has received an eight hundred thousand dollar grant for improvement of sidewalks along Hall's Road. Part of those sidewalks would be in the historic district, so we have to give our approval. The part of the sidewalks that are outside of the district fall within our statutory authority to give recommendations because sidewalks outside the district, linked to the district are note specifically noted in, in, in our governing statute. Uh, so I just would say we look forward to working with the, the Board of Selectmen and the other town authorities in considering, uh, proposed changes.
Is there a timeframe when?
It, it's, it's, it's down the road.
Down the road.
It's not immediate, but, uh, we, we expect to, we will be consulted as, as plans begin to take shape.
Great. And then the only other announcement that I have is Ed Penn, uh, is a new, uh, member of the Historic District Commission. He was voted by the Board of Selectmen on the seventeenth.
Yes.
Ed's not here today, but, uh, he's our, our new member. So, um, that, let's see, thirty-one Lime Street?
Yes.
Please come up.
Hi.
Hi.
Good to see you all again. Really deeply, hi. I really deeply appreciate my first conversation with you because we really didn't know what we bought into. And we're sort of up to speed now.
That's good.
Um, so anyway, uh, what I'm here today for is, this is the very, very beginning. Um, we have a carriage house. I have a picture of it from the street. That's what you see from the street, exactly that size, that proportion. So, um, what we would like to do is to renovate this carriage house and create an, uh, a studio, an artist's studio. Right now I have my studio in one of the bedrooms and my wife cannot wait to get me out of the house. So, um, I really don't know what's what. I'm starting from absolute scratch, so that's why I'm here. Um, we, uh, found out that, uh, in twenty fifteen, this, this carriage, carriage house used to be electrified. And twenty fifteen, there was a remodeling to the back of the house where they severed the, um, uh, the, uh, line. Uh, so it is now on the verge of, uh, being electrified once again. So I have that. I'm not planning on doing any plumbing whatsoever. Uh, but it does need to be, um, insulated. It needs to be, uh, heated and cooled. Uh, the big bugaboo, uh, to turn it into an artist's studio is light. Right now, there's, it's, there, basically it's not light. So, uh, what my proposal is, I have questions and then I have proposals. Um, we, uh, contacted a group called Craft and Design that does, uh, planning and building. Uh, thank you for the accompaniment. That's very nice. I may fall asleep, but, um, so soothing. Um, so, so light is the issue. Uh, so what, uh, um, and, and I need to meet you first before I start having them draw plans and all that. Uh, so they can guide them, you can guide me, then I can guide them. Um, there's, there's two different options. One is to keep, to keep this exactly, um, uh, come on. I knew this was gonna happen. It always does, right? Um, there you go. Okay, so this is what it looks like now. Um, and, uh, basically keep that shape, not change that whatsoever. And there are three options that I'm thinking about. One is to create a new front that would look very crude, apologies, but you know. Um, so, so that it would be doors that go up as high as possible with a possible round window, um, replacing that. And then steps down to the lawn. So that's one idea. Um, the second idea is, uh, just some kind of major window here somehow, some way, uh, that looks great for light to come in. Um, then the third option, I didn't do a drawing of it, but it would be, right now, this, this is, there's a loft, it's an actual hay loft that has not been changed. And it has the dead mice to prove it. Um, uh, to possibly, and this is much more expensive and I prefer not to do it, is to build up a bit. I don't know how far up and I, I know I have to, would deal, have to deal with zoning and the building, uh, department with all that. That would be able to save, um, the entire, uh, first floor and then have a second floor. Um, just wondering if that's possible. I most likely won't do that. Um, and then the next thing is, uh, are there, is there any jurisdiction where I would have to get permission to do skylights in, in the, uh, roof? And then the last thing is, um, this wall, I think I did, I got a picture of it. Um, oh no, there's more than the last thing. Okay, this is the side of the carriage house that it butts right up against the next property. I mean, you can ba- barely even walk there. But this is the north wall. And the north wall is actually the, the, the preferred, uh, place to put windows. And you don't see that from the street at all. Um, so I would, uh, uh, probably put as many as maybe three rows of large windows right up against there. Um, that's another, uh, way to get light inside.
An, an alternative or an addition to changing the front?
Uh, it could be one or both. It could be one or both because the more light you get in there during the day, like this is fantastic what you have here. Um, the more light you have during the day, the, the better it is because the shadows, you dissipate the shadows, which is what you want. Um, so that's that. And then the other thing, which you would not see from the street, but I'd have to work with the, um, uh, building department and zoning. We have this space here.
So is that also the north side?
Uh, no, this is the back of.
Oh, the back.
Yeah. So this is the back of the, um,
East side.
Yes, this is the east side, correct. No, south, yeah, east side, yes. East side this way, south side this way. So in order to have a place, um, to put all of the equipment and, uh, you know, lawn equipment and everything else, I would want to build not to the top, but, but along this roof edge here, extend it out as far as legally, um, possible and create a shed. And the, what the, um, craft and design people said, which I thought was a really great idea, was to take these doors and use them for the shed. And then use, uh, uh, replace them with, you know, something that would match to answer your question. To match the same here and possibly the same on the other side. Um, I think that's as far as I, I've gotten with my, um, thoughts on it.
Um, one of the first fundamental questions is, is the building within three hundred feet uh, from the road?
Oh, from the road.
From the road, yeah.
Okay.
And, 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 and that's, that's, and we can check as well. It's confirmed that it, that it's within our jurisdiction.
Oh, God, okay.
So if it's outside of three hundred feet, then it would not be.
We who.
Then all you have to worry about is the building.
Right.
That's right.
Now, I think it probably is, but we, we can, we can take a look at that and check that. And if, and I'll note that if any part of the building, so if it's a foot or it, it's, it's not the full, it doesn't have to be fully within three hundred, but if any part of the building is within three hundred feet, then it would fall under requiring a C of A application.
Okay.
That's fundamental.
And then what does C of A mean?
S- certificate of appropriateness.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's number one. Okay, so I will do that immediately.
Right. Um, any other comment?
That said, even if, um, it falls outside of the jurisdiction, in other words, more than three hundred feet back, because it's visible from Lime Street,
Right.
uh, we would greatly appreciate your being sensitive to what the requirements would be if it were within, you know, three hundred feet because it's such an important building in the historic district and because any change to the street-facing side will affect the historic district. So.
Literally, and I would love to, to match the house with that because right now, actually, it doesn't look like it. It's just like two windows. But I would love to match what the house has to the carriage house. That's part of the, um, plan.
Do you happen to know the date of the carriage house?
No.
Is it original to the property?
I don't think it is, but, um, I would, I would like to know that myself. We went to a historical district, uh, historical society and they didn't have much information on it.
Right.
So, uh, I'm trying to figure out how to
Yes.
find that out.
Do you, do you know the framing on the inside? Is it post and beam or is it?
Post and beam.
So it's, yeah.
It's pretty old.
Pretty old, yeah.
Yeah, and the walls are, they have to, they, there's a, um, that ladder is so old, I can't believe it still works. But it's the type of ladder that would go up to the hay loft and then come down. And, uh, there's original pulleys in there.
Hmm.
And there's original, um, my, my wife Leslie loves it, but the, the pegs are about this wide. And they, those original pegs are there. And then the loft, uh, uh, flooring, which is so thin, it's, it's like the heart blanks. It's like the King's blanks.
Heart fine, yeah.
They're so wide. And most likely that would come down and that would become the floor uh, of the, uh, and cause I would have to take, take some of the, it out to create a loft to make more space inside if I'm gonna keep it one, uh, if I don't build up. So.
Um, in terms of visibility from, from a street or, or public way, the rear, uh, clearly is not with respect to the north side, that it, it really is a question of whether any part of it is, it's visible. If you're walking north along Lime Street, is there some sightline that would allow visibility? Because then that we would, we would have jurisdiction and the same would go for, for skylights. Um, I just had a thought about your first sketch. Um, on, on our property, uh, several years ago, we converted an old horse barn to an accessory apartment. Now, this is way outside the historic district, but uh, instead of a, a door that goes basically up two stories, we divided it so there was a door and then a very wide vertical of window above it. And so I just, i- in terms of scale, uh, you might wanna pursue with your contractors, whether they really think a door that, that tall would, would fit with the character of the, the building.
Got it, got it. And then also that, that, but this would be if, if, if there's, well, you can see it from the street. So if there's, if that's okay, you know, that's, uh, would be permissible. That's a great idea.
Well, we, we haven't, we haven't, again, th- this property was out, this building was outside the historical district and it was on the rear, so you you can't see it, but, but to my, to my eye, it, it looks, it looks, uh,
More suitable.
The door looks more suitable to the scale of
Great. Yeah, anything to bring light in. It would be great.
I'll note on the, the Lime Art Association, there are skylights on that building for that very reason. And that the, the commission did approve of replacement. There was, uh, this was what, a couple of years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, the replacement of skylight. So we've been through the process with the, the skylight, uh, on the roof uh, as, as something that's been approved in the district recently. Yeah.
Great, great. Yeah, whatever, as much light as I can get in there would be great. That's it.
Short of it becoming a glass house.
I don't want that.
And Victor, just relevant to the date, I believe the Lime Historical Society has, uh, a list and a count list that Daniel Chadwick drew up with his builder. His name is Gladie. And so that may give some clues to the date. I, I don't remember.
The Lime Historical Society is different.
It's different from the old Lime Historical.
Lime Historical.
I know there too.
Is, is.
But the older documents are mostly at the Lime Historical, which preceded the old Lime Studies.
Housed in Florence Grisfield Museum.
Oh, great, okay.
I think it might be on the blogs that, that I wrote about Captain Chadwick's death.
You did that?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it might, that list may be on that. I can't quite remember. It was a while ago, but worth checking there first.
It will. Thank you very, thank you for that.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good to see you, everyone.
And you heard the discussion about submitting a C of A ahead of time.
Oh, yes, yeah. All right, here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, next on the agenda, ninety-six Lime Street.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. Hi, Pete.
Hi there. You had a nice Thanksgiving.
Cheers.
So we, um, based on our last meeting, we, um, uh, substantially trimmed the, the requests that we had to the parts of the property that were really sort of in the jurisdiction of the historic commission. Um, and so that's what, that's what we have today. Um, so the questions that came up in that meeting, like, um, the, the surface, um, and the color, we've tried to address here. Um, we'd want, you know, if this were to go, um, through and be approved, we would want, um, the, uh, chipstone to sort of match the gray pathways that we've installed throughout the property. Uh, and, you know, But but again, you know, wanting to sort of limit the um. Limit the scope of the ask for you for this group. Based on on all the plans that we have and that was sort of the jurisdiction here.
I see some of you reading the the kind of the short narrative, but um, there's only about a hundred and fifty square feet of alteration. Within the Historic District Commission boundary, um, which is. The addition of an entry road, which would be a chip seal surfaced driveway. And that's kind of boundary kind of clips part of the larger development of the site that's planned, that's under review with the zoning commission.
Right. Um, as we said in the. Uh, as Russ said in the. Previous uh agenda item, we 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 do. Since this driveway is a structure, if any part of it's within the district, that there's jurisdiction of the whole thing. I I know you wouldn't be changing chip seal to asphalt, but it's.
Quite the opposite, but it's, yeah.
So you're not proposing any change to the, at least at this time, to the initial entry.
Well, I, you know, as far as the the larger zoning package, the idea is is that will become a farm road.
I know, but I mean to the road.
No, this section, no.
Yeah, the entrance, the en- the entry onto the property from Lime Street remains in the exact same location and the first. You know, probably, I'm just trying to e- estimate the distance, but all the way, you know, past the Florence Griswold House remains intact, and then there's a new spur. That goes past the Lime Art Association into the main parking area that we're adding.
Right.
What about the, I know I asked before, but what about the timeframe? The application is only valid for one year, so if you submit it today, would you intend to. Uh, begin work on this road before the expiration of the.
Well, we can we can vary the date.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
I think that's a good question, Carolyn, I I um. The question of uh this road being sort of in the first or second phase of this process. Um, is still somewhat open. I think um. It's gotten remarkably less expensive, depending on the degree of. Finish that we intended to do, to make it a workable road for construction equipment, but I think our still. Still, our goal is to use the whole road access for for construction equipment, if that's allowed by the state. Um, in which case, this um isn't nearly as critical. Uh, in the early phase, so, but as I recall, the other part of it was is that um, similar to some of this as well. That when we get close to the expiration date, um, if it's not completed, we would reapply.
That's right. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other? And comment, first off, any any other comments that you would like to make?
No, otherwise, the plan is identical to what we've presented in the past, we just clarified what's within your um. Direct jurisdiction, and I understand the, any road that kind of crosses that boundary is still within your jurisdiction, but.
And at this point, you're not proposing any. Change to the walkway that's to the north of the. Farm road, you've talked about that last.
Yes, that that's right.
That would be some possible future.
Yeah, uh, you know, um, though, and when you say the walkway, John, you're talking about the asphalt that goes.
Yeah, this this.
I'd like to change it tomorrow. I I do think that that'll be um part of the second phase when we do things like um. Protect that boundary, uh, the trees that are there that are. At risk from the traffic that goes by there already, but that that's not currently part of the plan.
So the existing driveway, I realize stays in the same location, but um, will it be resurfaced after? Construction?
The main.
The existing one from the street forward.
Uh, that is, that bit of work, I believe, would definitely be in phase two.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna ask for a cost from the contractor to do that, but it's not not um certain that we would. Resurface the existing driveway.
It's chip seal right now?
No.
No, it's asphalt now, if it were ever to be altered um and may be a kind of a tropical road, it would be chip seal. Um, but in the the long range plan for the project is to take out the existing driveway. Entirely um and convert a section of it that runs from the Florence Griswold House to the Creble Museum Building where the existing museum entry is. Into a farm lane. Meaning we would take out the asphalts entirely. Uh, as it exists now, regrade that and just use it as a pedestrian pathway and an emergency access.
But I mean from Lime Street.
That section, I we, in the drawings call for the the contract to provide a price to resurface that with chip seal. It's not part of the base project, but if it were ever to be resurfaced, it would be chip seal.
Well, that would be a different C of A, correct?
Yeah.
Right, that would be a future C of A.
That'd be a future C of A, yeah.
Right, so today, the only C of A you're asking for is this triangle.
The very narrow triangle, but but by extension, the surface of the entire. Entry drive into the parking.
Think about it, if we approve, if we approve the triangle, then we can approve the rest of, yeah.
Project has legs.
Can I make a motion? Yeah. I move that we accept the proposal as submitted.
We need to just ask if if any comments from anyone else in the hall?
In the hall, yeah.
Any public comments?
Hearing none, yes.
So I move that we accept the proposal as submitted.
We have a second.
A second.
We have a second discussion? No discussion, uh, can we take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On another thing, you had last meeting asked for a letter. That you would submit to zoning, which I'm happy to do, or we're happy to do. Um, but I had understood that you would be sending a copy of this map with some shading that showed the the historic.
With zoning uh boundaries or the sort of.
The historic district.
It is, it is on there, although maybe it was, it's a, it's a color drawing, so it's a little bit harder to interpret in black and white, but there is a. Thick dash line that shows the Historic District Commission boundary.
It's 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 this.
It's that, and then there's a uh kind of a darker shade um. Which I can point to. Here, which is this, the area, I didn't shade the whole boundary, but I just shade shaded the area that we're altering this within the boundary.
Well, if if you could.
But we could, we could.
Is this a separate document? Is this, do you have this as?
It's included with. It was, it was all, it was all one piece.
Can you se- can you separate this? Because when I do the the letter, when we do the letter, I'd like to attach this doc.
I will send it as a standalone plan.
And then we can get that.
That would be wonderful. Very much. Right, Martha, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And what what is your? We we do have, and again, Carolyn, I'm sorry for interrupting, but we do have flexibility, we usually do the C of A for a year. But if you are saying this would be done in two years, we could make it for two years.
I know, it's an interesting question, I think if it's as if it's as easy to to ask for renewal. Based on where we are a year from now, we can do that, I think.
Let's do that.
I mean, then if plans change.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But the personnel does put on the calendar.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Website discussions, Carolyn and Julie.
Yes, um. I apologize for not getting that done in time for everybody to see it, because it takes amalgamation of what. My revisions were in Julie's revisions and John's revisions. But I did send to John and Julie a mostly complete inclusion of the of the website changes, there are very few. There are not very many, and they're not really significant or substantial for. For everyone to consider. That can be done so that we could approve the the website revisions, I hope, at the January meeting. And in the meantime, I'm also working on um a possible list of FAQs. For the, because the intern, as John has told us, would be working um with us to develop a. A revised set or a new set or an amended set of frequently asked questions, so I did start, and we should make suggestions for that. So on the existing, just for your, uh, just for your review, on the existing. Uh, HTC website, there are only three, um, when do the meetings take place, are they pu- open to the public and. Something else very routine about procedural, so I would think that we might want to, even though. Uh, you know, our, I think our text is very comprehensive, and for the most part, I think it's pretty clear and no longer redundant. Nevertheless, in the FAQs, I think we might want to include um a few other uh quite simplified questions. Um, for example, how do I sit, how do I submit materials, just in case, because there's so much prose. You know, in the longer sections, that maybe a little bit streamlined with very short questions, very short answers would be helpful. Um, and I thought perhaps, I don't know if you think it's a good idea. There could be a question, why does the HTC. Um, regulate or whatever verb we want signage, because some people may wonder why that's. Relevant to the HTC, it's explained in the signage guidelines quite extensively, but perhaps. Shorter, you know, shorter answers, and then, so any of you have suggestions, just send them to me, and I I would. Send these to the intern, and then she could generate the answers maybe, or I mean, actually, we, it's not hard to do, but. But it's one less task for us if she wants to, and it would get her involved, so.
A shorthand for the C of it, C of A, because that's what most people interact.
Yes, shorthand for the C of A.
Oh, yeah.
And I I also had, wha- what does like?
And like the like.
What does like for like mean, so just putting it in.
Victor, today, that was a big example of, he's been here a few times for other things, but. Pretty much as a new homeowner, where do I start? What are the questions? He said, what is the C of A?
Yes.
You know, we throw the term around.
But have the link to the like for like form and the link to C of A.
Yes, yes, and then maybe something else, just thinking about Victor, if if I'm planning a a a renovation. What is my first step, and then say the HTC appreciates, you know, early opportunity to.
Discuss, right, right.
Provide guidelines or suggestions or something, some, find some word for that, so those are the kinds of. FAQs that I was thinking of, so we now have three, maybe have a total of ten, we don't want them to be overwhelming, but. Not more than ten, so that's my suggestion. And then if we pu- pull it all together, and then the 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 commission can, I hope, vote in the at the January meeting, so we can finish this.
Great work.
Does that sound okay?
This does remind me, it was, I believe, after last meeting, wasn't it, that Martha and I met with. With Elena.
Yes.
The intern, and we have quite a list of. Possible projects for her. My fingers are crossed that her.
She'll rise to the occasion.
Before she finishes.
Anyway, we can do the FAQs if she doesn't get to, but. And then my only other question is, this is just me, but I don't know how much if we, there's a lot of information now. About our commu- there's a lot of communication between the HTC and the and the Railroad Authority and Amtrak, do we want all of that? Do we need all of that? Do we want all of that on the website, because it then becomes a matter of record? I can't imagine that too many people will want to read through all of that correspondence, it's it's quite tedious, actually, for the lay reader. So my question to you is, does all that really belong on the website? But if the only reason to have it, in my view, is that it becomes part of the record, so going forward. Maybe we would refer to it, I don't know.
I I'm not sure that uh the most recent letter to Amtrak needs to be there, it doesn't directly concern the historic district. I do kind of like the idea of posting our January or keeping posted our January. Twenty four letter to FRA and Amtrak and their detailed reply, I think the subsequent reply, May one, which is shorter, would be. Is just a boilerplate that they sent to to everybody.
What I'm thinking, yeah, a lot of it is boilerplate.
It really does have in it. I mean, to ju- just have two thoughts, I, it it does have a pretty comprehensive review of of of. The structures in the in the district and references about them and. Notes what properties are on the National Historic Register, et cetera.
Like question is, do we need that on our website? Not that it's not valuable, but is it, does it belong on the website, that that's.
But the other reason is. If the funding goes through at the end of the year and and FRA and Amtrak have funding to proceed. This becomes, again, a huge town issue, and this is. The place where folks could come to for information.
Okay.
I think, I think if there's, I think if there's, if we've submitted a request. And we get a s- significant answer, not not a boilerplate, general, then I think it's important to post that.
Right.
Because that's that's information that the the town as a whole should be aware of, yeah.
And it relates directly, potentially, to the.
To the district, right, that's true, right.
Well, then, I'm going to leave that section to John to, you know, to to cull, as it were, so that. You include only the most relevant. Documents on the website.
Martha, now you could, you could ask. Whoever puts stuff up or down on the website, just to take off the the second reply we got from Amtrak, doesn't really say anything.
Great.
All right. Realtor sign discussions, John.
Yes, uh, this was on the, it's the same material that was on the agenda for last meeting, but um, we didn't have time to get to it. If you flip to. Part nine and part thirteen, the boldface language is what's new, we we've been over and. The text of suggested revisions for realtor and building contractor signs. Several times, I I hope you've had a chance to look at this, and I hope we can adopt it. This, the second. Attachment is just a a. Form or acknowledgement that each real estate company would sign, that would um. Contain some basic guidelines about what they were permitted to do, it essentially just tracks what. Is in section, section thirteen of the guidelines.
So I have a couple of comments, I thought there, I thought it reads. I think it reads very well, um, until the last two sect- the last two, if you turn to the page six. In my view, the. That the the provisions of these design review guidelines is a little bit difficult to parse. And the and the final sentence, any property owner that wants to install. May, instead of relying on an RC sign installed in compliance with this provision thirteen, apply for a COFA and may not install, I thought it was confusing. Uh, so I would recommend that perhaps those two could be. Clarified and simplified. Um, but otherwise, I thought it, I I think it reads well. Do we, first of all, do we even read these? I'm not sure that they're, they they seem such, they seem fine points.
I'm thinking of the circumstance for that, are you thinking for a small, independent real estate. Agency that is not one of the big ones in town? That the the homeowner would apply for the C of A? Instead of the agency?
There there were two, there were two reasons, one is. Yeah, I mean, uh, property owner who's trying to sell the property himself or herself.
Okay.
And secondly, it it is a way to recognize that. The primary person responsible for. Signs on property is the property owner, though, if for some reason they said, I just hate these. Big clunky realtor signs, I want to do something different, they acknowledges that they have.
Okay.
The option.
I find that still, that in terms of the the reason I like the preceding. Um, guidelines about signs is that they're very clear, no RC sign may be illuminated, and then the next one becomes. And then the next one becomes, I think, rather convoluted. And I'm not sure what it would actually.
You mean the next sentence?
I mean, the next sentence, and then the final sentence.
Or concise.
I would think if they're not absolutely critical, we would leave them off. Yeah.
Well, how about if you just said?
So you can think about that. I just wanted to flag it.
Well, I'd love to get to language. I'd like to get this done so that I can, I can, we can send something out to Realtors. I mean, again, nobody's beating down the door, but how about just in lieu of in lieu of approval under Section 13, the, a property owner may apply for a C of A.
To cover what if I use a one-off Realtor from Hereford County that isn't here and doesn't, isn't under this blanket? Or if I have a stonemason in my yard? I think you need to be clear if this responsibility on the homeowner. If you're going to use an agent from Hereford County that doesn't, not familiar with this, you have to do the application. If you're going to have a stonemason in your yard, you're going to do the application.
That's already clear, isn't it Deb? I think, I do, and I think that's, I think that's already been made clear in the, in the proceeding. That's why I'm not sure we need this.
Where, where is it clear?
If it's, if it's really just a fine point. Maybe we can admit it. So it's a, I think there are two questions in front of us. Do we need it? That's the first question. And if we do need it, how should we clarify the wording?
How about if you say in the absence of a form acknowledging compliance with these guidelines, a property owner may submit a C of A application. And that, I mean, it doesn't specify the scenarios, but it's really cumbersome if you start saying I want to show you all, you know.
Right.
We should. You have to submit a C of A.
So we should, I think it should then start with a property owner, blank, blank, must, blank, blank. And so that would clarify.
Well, how about a property owner must submit a C of A application in the absence of and track the language from the, the lead, in the absence of a, a form of acknowledging compliance with the guidelines in this, this section.
Okay.
Well, isn't, isn't it by default that that if you're going to put up a sign in your yard, in your owner, you have to have a C of A? And that this is, this section is the kind of the exception to that. I mean, it's almost like, are we restating what's in the front of the
Right.
Document, right?
It, it's technically, I guess it is the default. I'm just trying to again, say, if, picture somebody who's not at all familiar with these procedures. Say, oh, I want to, you know, they want to sell their home and they're looking at this, go through this.
Then just maybe that's it. Maybe under the RC section, a homeowner may submit a C of A for a Realtor or contractor sign.
Well, a contractor must if there's no form. There's no Realtor form.
Right, because I feel like most of these guidelines are for the, the nonprofits regarding their signage. What specifically for the house across the street? I, I just want to make sure that it's, because it's more of a probability of somebody selling their house rather than somebody erecting a woodwork game shop sign or something by the owner, just to make that clear.
I'm, I'm not.
A property, a homeowner selling without a Realtor or, or something like that?
Right, just.
Must submit a C of A.
Right, someone.
To, before erecting a sign, advertising the property or something.
I know.
Is that where you're getting it?
Fine, I can try to, I can't, you know, drafting in committee is hard. I can try. I did look at the sentence.
Okay. Well, anyway, that one, we could, we don't have to debate it too long, but we can.
Oh, I guess we can come back in January.
Yeah. So submit something, we'll review it and then submit the, present the whole package at the January meeting.
One, one question, one question I had, John, was the section, on Section 13, the second to last sentence, where it says, no RC sign may include photographs or artwork. Is, is a company logo, is that considered artwork or not?
That's a good point, except for the company logo.
Maybe, maybe that's stated, because, you know, some, some logos are artistic. Maybe just add artwork.
Yeah, just except for a company logo.
Except for a company logo, right?
Good idea.
Yes. Other than that, I'm good to go with it. Is there, is there a scenario we could pass it today with the, the changes that?
Yes.
To get it off John's plate?
Yes. That would be fine with the provision. John, I have one question, maybe just my reading of the legal language, but on the acknowledgement of conditions about midway through the first paragraph, the company may install temporary signs identifying the company and advertising the rental. I thought that was, I thought there was only one sign. So should it be, the company may, I'm on the last page now, acknowledgement of conditions midway through the paragraph. The company may install temporary signs identifying the company and advertising the renters without advanced approval of a C of A. But that's, the, the second part is clear, but I thought we had said only one sign, so I wondered if it should read
For prop.
Company may install a temporary sign identifying. Because the company can't erect more than one sign, isn't that right?
Well, they can and with different properties.
Different properties.
You're right. My intention was to.
Oh.
But you could, to read the company may install one, one temporary sign per property.
Okay. Good, that's clear. Thank you. So if, if there's a need to, you know, for speed, I'd be very happy to make a motion.
There's no need. I just, we went through this with the full signage guidelines. And, and the thought has crossed my mind with respect to demolition guidelines. It just takes a while.
Yes, but we're getting better at it. We're getting quicker, I think. Okay.
Well, so what's your preference? I, I guess my slight preference is let me make changes. Everybody should see this.
Okay, great.
All right. Demolition guidelines in discussion, and John took a stab at a it's, had kind of outlining the, the concern, the issues, the, the thoughts. So maybe, John, why don't you give us a
Yeah.
Preface on what you're thinking.
It really falls into two parts. First part, Part B, potential guidelines for moving or demolition of buildings. I, I think the goal would be to have more guidance as we did with the signage guidelines for property owners. This is probably too, too detailed for the, the handbook, but this process, I think, will sharpen our focus for revising the handbook, which comes up not too many years from now, Martha, yes. Jesus.
The last one was 2018, I think. So you tend to do it every 10 years.
So, you know, if we could get
Yeah, good.
Lighting and demolition and the, the things done. The, this draft is largely cribbed from what I thought was the best of the several samples from other towns, some omissions, some additions. Here's the big question. This, this is largely two and a half. Yeah. Three, three and a half pages. And it's, it's still rather general. If, if we want to include information about specific guidelines for renovations as an alternative, it gets really detailed. And so my thought was to have general guidelines and then point to some sources. Well, two options, either just point to some sources that have a bunch of pointers about how you would renovate things or incorporate by reference some of the resources that, that were in the PowerPoint that Ed and Russ circulated.
Right, I'm gonna say the, the Shippo presentation.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're really quite, quite thorough.
Right.
Good, I think that makes sense.
I mean, I'm not sure which, which way to, 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 to go. I hate to incorporate them by reference unless we're, we all go through them thoroughly and are really crystal clear that that's what we want. As opposed to it just being general, general guidelines. So that's the first part. We want some guidelines. If so, here's a really rough point circulated to, to Russ and his, his reaction had to do with the, shall we say, integrity as a whole of the district. We have a district that's not a role of most just of, let's say, stately homes. It's, it's, reflects its historical mixed, mixed usage. And it, it may be that some of the language
I think.
This draft needs to be massaged to take account of, of the concern with maintaining the district.
Well, I think, I think, I went back and, to me, it's that this is a, in 1971, this district was submitted and approved as a national historic district. And there's a document that is that, that's online for the National Historic Places. And it identifies all the structures that contribute to the character that creates the National Historic District. So any removal of one of those structures is not only a detriment to that, the historic aspect of that particular structure, but to the district as a whole. And, and, and to me, that's the bigger point, is that all of the structures, there's, there were 71 at the time. And I think there's 72 now, because there's a new house in the district, but there are 71 structures that were identified, that, hey, I encourage everybody to, to take a look at, to take a look at that and I'll, I'll share it. If, if you don't have access. And then also to go back and look at the study committee document that the town of Olin put together to make that submission. And, because it, I think there's a lot of language in there that speaks to why the removal of a structure would impact the district. And so to draw from that core resource was kind of my, my thought on whatever would go in such, such guideline.
My, my question, again, partly because, not again, partly because I'm leaving town shortly for a few months, is to, to wonder whether Russ and Ed might be able to put their heads together and just look at, look at this, see if it works, but plug in.
Right.
You'll, you'll see where this one focuses on the impact of removal of one structure in a section of a historic district. The more holistic approach might, might be sensible. The, the second part, much briefer, on page five, talks about possible ordinances. The last P O C D, one of their recommend, recommendations concerning the historic district was to adopt or amend the demolition delay ordinance for historic houses. That's I think they had in mind historic houses in the Historic District Commission, but that could be outside the, the district. I would point out that we do have in our governing statute three steps we could take with respect to demolitions al- already. Number one, you, you have to have a, a, a C of A for any demolition or removal of any structure. So we could refuse to approve a C of A or add all sorts of conditions. The, the second is that there are a couple a couple of I guess I can combine these into, to, to just, instead of a second, a third, a second, a couple of specific conditions in our governing statute that refers specifically to demolitions or, or removals. One concerns detailed statements of the proposed condition and appearance of the property after something is demolished. That's, that's something we normally don't do. And then finally, the last provision talks about if even, if they have a C of A and the demolition permit has been issued, there can be a delay while the HDC or another specified entity pursues, shall we say, last ditch efforts. That's not in the statute, but last ditch efforts to find a different, a different buyer who would agree to to renovate the property. So we already have some things, but, but we, we do have, I think, I would, I would like for the commission to follow up with the planning commission and respond to issues that they raised in their P O C D. So we do owe them something, I think, in response to that suggestion. We could either say we have sufficient authority. Now, in the district, second step could be, but we're making an additional proposal for historic structures outside the, the district. And, and that's the, the last part of my proposal. We, we could propose, we're authorized to propose ordinances, new ordinances. And I put in two, two options that are provided for in state statute. One is we could propose a historic properties commission. Think this body, but with respect to individual historic houses outside the historic district. There's a statutory provision that authorizes a town to create a commission for historic properties. And it's really the same language. If you want to change a historic property, demolish it or move it or do anything with it, you have to apply for a C of A.
Does the town, I mean, so it's my understanding that when this commission was formed, it was voted upon by residences in, in the district, or was it a townwide?
It was townwide, I believe, but you can check.
I think it was.
So, so this sounds like it would certainly, it would be a townwide vote?
Yeah, it's a townwide ordinance, so yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
Right.
One drawback to that is it requires the same study process that was undertaken to create a historical, the, the historical district, which is very involved and time consuming. The second option is the creation of The second option is the creation of not a historic properties commission, but a historic preservation commission. And Preservation Connecticut has, uh, have provided the link to. A. State statute that authorizes this type of commission. It applies only to. Properties. That are listed on. Or are under consideration for listing on either the National Register of Historic Places. Or the State Register of Historic Places. So that potentially is, is a little bit narrower in scope than. Historic properties commission. The advantage is it's, it's really rather. Open-ended. The, the drafts that Preservation Connecticut has provided. Has three focuses. Re- research and documentation. Several ideas for close collaboration with other. Municipal boards and commissions. And what they term a modest regulatory review. So it wouldn't be the kind of. Focus on major changes to buildings in particular, rather than the concern with everything. So that, all the structures of signs and driveways and walkways and, and all of that. But it could be varied. Here's the key. This is a statute quoted here in its entirety. We can, you can create that it author, the, the statute authorizes municipal regulation. To protect the historic and Eric architecture, character of properties. As long as they're either on or being considered for the national or state, uh, registers. So you can do anything or propose anything that falls under that umbrella. It's, it's in addition to. It's, it's in a statute that lists all the authorities and towns and cities have to regulate everything. Least and this and that. It's, it's, it's much more open, open-ended.
I, I, I prefer the, the greater clarity of the Historic Properties Commission. But I worry about the detailed study process because I think it's important to have something. Some regulation, some regulatory mechanism soon. Um, but I'm not, I wonder if there's any way to combine. Uh, the, you know, some, make our own.
Well.
What list of, list of inclusions?
Yeah, I don't know why you couldn't. Take the bulk of the. Historic properties authority and incorporated in the, in the second way.
That's what I was wondering.
With perhaps eliminating some of.
That's what I was wondering.
Things. I mean, we already have through your work and others. We could probably pretty readily come up with a list of historic properties. There's the Congress listing too. And, and.
Right.
Come, combine the, the, the two, the two things.
That's what I was suggesting.
Okay, who wants to do it?
I don't, I don't have the legal language to be able to do it.
Proposal that we would propose to the selectmen?
To planning and so planning and. Initially, and then to the selectmen, yeah. The Historic Properties Commission is much more particular about who has to approve. You know, the procedural steps you go through.
Well, I don't mind taking a stab at combining the language. You know, borrowing some of the language from the Historic Properties Commission. And replacing, using it to replace some of the language in the Historic Preservation Commission. I could take a stab at that. But you, you would have to provide the legal.
Oh, and Dave, David could.
Detail.
Yeah, I, I can't, as you know, offer legal opinions.
Oh, no, I don't mean legal opinions. I just mean you could, you could edit. Yeah, you could edit.
Well, I, I, from, from my perspective, there's two parts. There's, there's confirming and strengthening the. Demolition requirements or moving of structures within the district. To me, that's one goal. The second goal is.
A broader.
A broader, right? And to me, the, the, the first goal is the priority in, in my mind. And then the, the second is second priority.
Can we do them together?
Yeah, sure.
Easily could. I, I think, you know, by analogy to the authority we have in the historic di- district now. A historic. Either properties commission or preservation commission. These two options could include authority over or would include authority with respect to demolitions and removals.
So which sets.
And, and, and one other part of part one and part two is that it's not just the regulation, but also. I love the, the thought of. How do we become a resource? And, and not unlike what happened with the.
Lime. Youth Services.
Light and youth ser- services. It's, it's a depository of information to. And, and I'm, I'm not sure that's our role, right?
But it's still useful.
differ from the referral that we did to Shippo with the learning center.
Well, it, it, I mean, we have, we have authority now to. This is our catch-all authority. This is how we got to comment on Hall's Rogue.
Right.
Zoning proposals. That's why we have jurisdiction over sidewalks outside the district or jurisdiction with respect to making recommendations. So. It, it, it envis, it's just, it's, you read through it. There are just a lot more ideas about. You, you're, you're just adding specifics. What we have now is, is built off of. You know, you got. Very general language and just not the same old as this set. We can provide information now. Well, yes and no. The statute says we can provide information to property owners in the district. So that covers the. You know, the situation you were turning, talking about. We can cooperate with other en- entities. Interested in historic preservation.
Right.
It doesn't say simply in the district. That was the authority we used when we were reviewing. The request to comment on the Griswold Point property. So. You know, this just talks about authority. If, if we wanted to. You know, sponsor lectures and set up tours and. It, it's much more specific about the educational.
Well, well, that, that was what I found at the Old Sabre. That was a historic. Old Sabre Historic District Meeting and they had Shippo come give a presentation. Uh, which was very, very helpful and. And I guess they did that as, it was, it was their regular scheduled meeting. I don't believe it was a special meeting. But to me, that's how. That's how we can pause this. That's the carrot, if you will, versus the stick.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I mean, Carolyn, I'm, I'm more than happy remotely to, to. Do some preliminary.
That would be great.
Back and forth about what, what we think a statute would.
And then move.
Now, the, one, one last word with, with respect to either of these commissions. But I'll, I'll talk about the Historic Properties Commission. With respect to the membership, the town could appoint an entirely new commission with entirely new people. It also says specifically, the people on this commission may be the same people on the Historic District Commission. So. My guess is that might well be what comes to pass, which translates into. Yet more work. I mean, not everybody on the commission may want to. Agree to be on the new commission, but it, it, it is new work. On the other hand. It's important. We almost, we almost, we came, I think, close to losing a really important historic.
That's right.
And in the past.
So wo- would it, is it too. Um, quick, let's say, or too hasty to try to consolidate this language into. Language that could appear on the website, which would force us to consolidate it and be more precise. In addition to. Um, fine tuning or, you know, um, whatever, combining the language and the two. Commissions that you hear, you, you provide here. My question is, I'm, is should we use the January third meeting as a target? So that we can move this forward both in both, in two ways, because this is all very helpful, but it would need to be. Winnowed down and Julie and I could work on that. Um, and you and I could work on the. Language and then we might have something we could present in January, which would be great.
Well. I mean, that, that's a, that's a, a big ask for January. I, I think. The demolition. Guidelines. Could, could be adopted and then combined as you have now with, with a, a shorter. Here, however many you had on your list, five or six quick points about signs. And if you want more detailed information, here's the link to the signage. If you could do the same.
Right.
Same thing with.
That's what I was suggesting, yeah. We wouldn't be able to accept it. We'd probably have to discuss it, but maybe then we could accept it in February. I'm not, I don't want us to. Take the same time that we've taken on Realtor signs and signage guidelines on demolition. I think we've gotten better at it and I think we should. You know, streamline it and be more efficient and yeah, get it done.
Probably more efficient leadership on those.
No, no, no. I just think, well, you know, it took so many drafts and yeah, we can do it. We can.
It, it's hard to come up with a commission-wide decision, but I, I think that's a good. I would recommend that be the first goal and we could take a shot on the second and whatever we get on the table. The sooner we get something on the table.
That's right. That's what I.
It was two documents. It's two.
Two documents.
Yeah, right, that's.
The second would be a proposal for a town.
Right.
Right.
Okay, great. Any comments from the? Any comments from the audience about?
Regarding the creation of a new commission. So John, that would be if I owned a eighteen fifty house somewhere else in Old Lime. And I had a barn or part of the house that I wanted to demolish. Or, but this would not.
Or, or conceivably change in any way. Such as any changes affecting the.
Okay. Historic. That's what I was wondering.
I mean, the, the first one. Essentially tracks the H D C language. It just applies it to individual historic. Properties here and there that are not in a, a dis.
So what other towns do that? Does Sabre do it? Weathersfield? Like what other towns that have a H D C that are going to?
Well, an H P C.
H P.
Well, I, I, I know the, 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 the Congress website list. The Connecticut, the Shippo resources of properties that are national, state and locally. Designated either district or individual property. So there's, there's kind of a framework for that, but I don't know how each.
Well, I mean, Martha, could you? Get in touch with. Shippo or, or Preservation Connecticut and just get a, get a number so we know how many have this. Historic Properties Commission. And how many have statutes under. The, the second listing, the, the C G S chapter ninety-eight listing, they're two separate. Separate things. I mean, that would be useful to know, especially the, the second, uh, i- if there's a smaller town. The, the, the model statute, the model ordinance. Is in, in several places kind of geared for a, a, a city. It strikes, strikes me.
I just couldn't imagine being a homeowner and then suddenly getting something saying, oh, now your, your house is historic, but now. These are the guidelines that you have to follow. Is that?
That's why the town would have to vote them.
Town would have to vote on it. It's also, it's also under the Historic Properties Commission. There's a procedure where individual owners can object. But they're not automatically excluded. It's part of the study process and it allows them to. To make their case that they ought not be included and then the study commission comes back with its recommendation. And the planning commission could either agree with the property owner and cut them out or.
Yeah.
Keep them in.
And also two things that I, I agree with Russ that, that we, I think we should find a way to be able to stress the. Um, resources for alternatives to demolition. I think that's very important. And I also just, this is also what you said at the beginning, Russ, uh, under, under letter B guidelines for moving. And number one, importance of preservation. I would recommend that. We move historic properties are irreplaceable up high. Because I think we need to explain why it's important. And then your second point, that removal of any structure affects the entire historic district. And then the H D C. So I would just change the order to.
Yeah, and the other, the other thing I'll mention is that, and I'm not proposing it, but the original study. Actually identified a, a couple of other districts at the time.
Oh, great.
So go back and look at the nineteen seventy-one study. There was a creation of. The current district, but there are a couple of other, one, one or two other areas.
I think there were because when we looked at whether or not the, um, ancient section of the Duck River Cemetery could be. Become part of the, an extended, uh, uh, old lime H D C. There's language there that, that describes. What an extended.
Right, so, so all, all I'm saying is that if, if it becomes too onerous or. Or maybe even the commission doesn't want to submit part two, there may be an extension of part one. In that there may be. At least, at least at the time, there was the thought that there are other areas in town that are worthy of becoming a historic district. Why they chose not to. Approve that at the time, maybe they didn't get the votes. I don't know, but, but we should, we should look at that too.
Good. And do we have to just define what his, what is a historic structure? Does that mean a structure that was built before such and such date? Does that need to be clarified?
I, I, again, I think, I think we should go back and look at what was submitted to. Well, I, let me put it this way. There are two things that you could submit for at least state or national. One is an individual property, right? Florence Griswold Museum in itself is a national registered building. All the other structures here are not, but they are structures that contribute to the old line of story district.
Right.
So.
And, and are on the national.
And they're, they're by default on the register. Because they're part of that district and they can, they're contributory.
Yeah.
Items to the district. So.
The key language under, under the second ordinance option, the more general language is. Properties or districts that are listed on the National Register or the State Register. Or under consideration for. And the under consideration for, I think, involves a step of actually. You know, documentation has been submitted.
Right.
And some of that documentation is in the, in that historic architectural survey.
Right, right.
Yeah, so if, if we're dra, if we're not following the Historic Properties Commission language. And I, I don't recall what it says about what qualifies. I don't, not sure that it has the same limitation. So you might. Have a broader scope of houses permitted here, but if we're, you know. Have a broader scope of houses permitted here, but if we're, you know. Using some of the authority under the Historic Properties Commission, the first one, in the second. If you were using this, it only applies to properties that are on the, on or being considered for the national or state. Register.
Any other discussion? Any, is there possibly a public comment?
I I mean, usually you don't, but um are are you just watching or do you have a comment?
Would you guys like to weigh in on this?
I don't think we want to weigh in. We're just here to listen to the discussion. I'm not sure we want to weigh in on the record. But potentially after giving adjournments, if there's any chance for conversation, but uh. Now, as we said, you know, as we saw, we sent you an email.
Right.
We just didn't know if that would be brought to that.
Okay, after. Secretary's report. Active C of As. We're just about done.
So we are monitoring nineteen uh situations. In the historic district involving active C of As or other matters. Um that includes some like for like. Applications too. Uh we have, do you want me to list them all or?
Not required.
The only new thing we got was a uh a like for like form from uh the Merrells. On uh twenty seven Lime Street for a, just re- replacing a roof.
A roof, right, right. We saw that, right.
Yes, and they they did submit it with the property owner's name on it.
Right.
And signature, so.
Great.
That's what we have. No update on the Historic Plaque Program. Um, right now I'm working on the annual CLG report. Which is a certified local government report that we do every year. We report to Shippo on uh. How many C of As we've, we've considered, how many we approved, if we denied any. And just general things, if there were any new members to the commission, things like that, just a general, very brief overview on. What we've been doing, if we adopted anything new, um if the town had any um. Tax incentives for historic properties or anything like that. So I'm working on that and then we have the budget. And I included. Little spreadsheet there, which is what they sent me. They sent that to me on Wednesday, like the day before Thanksgiving. Like I'm really looking at the day before Thanksgiving. Anyway. It's basically, they want recommendations for us if we want to change anything except the salaries. The um. The salary for the clerk and the the admin for me, we don't have any control over that. We just control the rest of it.
But do we control, if we put in a cap? And and the town raises salaries to correspond to cost of living. That me would mean we get fewer hours of your assistance. So I'm wondering if we should. Put in slight increases for.
Yeah.
Those two items.
There are some, some parts of our budget that we, we don't fully use. If you look at the totals. Of the budget and then the actuals, we very rarely use all of our budget.
Yeah, I mean, some of these are, some of these are problematic because. Five hundred dollars doesn't buy you much legal advice. When we, when we. If you look at the two twenty one, twenty two, when we were trying to figure out some naughty questions about the. Definition of the district and and figure out signage. I- interpretation of the statutory provisions on signs. You know, your budget of five hundred, we spend almost five thousand. You have to go back for supplemental, so. And then we have, you know, one, two, three. Four years in a row where we're spending nothing on on legal. I I I don't know. I guess it makes sense to to keep it in at five hundred, just as a sort of placeholder.
It's, yeah, that's what they told us. Just have it as a placeholder and then if something comes up and we need more money, we just make the case to the Board of Finance.
Other and miscellaneous would cover what types of things?
Uh miscellaneous covers uh when we send money to um. Preservation Connecticut and Florence Griswold.
Well.
That's about the only thing we ever use that for.
I mean, I would, I would suggest. Adding a, a little bit more to the first two, two items.
Yes.
I mean, that, those haven't gone up in in in. Five years, four years.
Yeah, they kept it pretty steady there.
Would you, would you want to peg it to uh the COLA and have it be a three percent increase? It seems reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, I I'd say three percent, but with, so that would be. Maybe just round up. I would make the second one forty nine hundred and ninety. The first one. Twenty one hundred, maybe, just to have sort of round, round figures.
I like the idea of the.
I mean, it's, it's a. I've said before, but Martha's help is invaluable, so. And there's stuff that Russ and I just can't do, so.
Amen.
Want to make sure that we're covered.
Do you need a motion to approve?
We need to approve this.
We're two people leaving.
Do we need to approve?
It's a good idea, like if you want to keep the other things the same.
So I move we accept the, the budget for the coming year with the uh provisions that have been recommended. With the changes that have been recommended.
Twenty one hundred and forty nine hundred, yeah. Uh second.
Second.
John seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um for new business, the P O C D. Will come in with a, a list of the stuff that HDC has to get back to planning on.
Right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?